Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the March 21st Currituck County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. At 5:00 PM this afternoon, we had a joint meeting or work session with the Camden County Board of Commissioners at the Extension Building to discuss the OLF. Next, we have, I think, Mr. Scott Finnicum just come in. He is with the Mount Zion United Methodist Church, and he's also the chaplain at the Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department, and he will lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Thank you, sir. Grand entrance. Everyone, please stand.
Is it wrong to thank God for not seeing a sheriff? Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we give thanks for this day, for the many blessings in which you have poured out upon our lives, most especially these, the servants of your people, who have come together tonight to do a good work and a good thing. Give them grace and wisdom, voices and discernment in all of their dealings, and let all be blessed who gathered tonight. In the name of the risen Lord, let us all say, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You need to know when you leave tonight, the sheriff heard you say, glad there weren't any on the way here.
Thank you, sir. Item number one, approval of the agenda. We have two items that we need to do tonight's agenda. Item 7A is consideration of proposed legislation, and item 11 would be a close session with our attorney. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it. Item two, public comment period. This is a time when anyone may come forward and speak about any issue not appearing on tonight's agenda. I would ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, and Mr. McCree will be our timekeeper. First, we have Mr. Denton Snyder. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, Commissioner's staff. My name is Denton Snyder. I live at 112 Founder Street, Moyahut. The concern that I'd like to share with you tonight has to do with the UDO. On January 31st this year, I was informed by letter that I was in violation of the UDO Section 2.5 Outdoor Storage, as I had four trailers and a motor vehicle parked on a vacant lot in a residential area. It should be noted that I have my trailers on this lot since I came here to live in North Carolina full-time in 1998. That's approximately 12 years. In fact, that is why I purchased the lot in May 1999, so I would continue to have a place to park my trailers. Well, I was told that was illegal. This is picture you see right now is what I told was legal. I inquired with the code enforcement officer, and she says, yes, that's legal. And she says, in fact, I could put unnumber limited of licensed trailers and motor vehicles on my property that has a house on it. I believe the problem, in my opinion, is one of storage. Storage is not defined in the UDO. In my opinion, items that are used once a year on special occasions like Christmas, Thanksgiving, October, you know, Halloween, et cetera, are storage items. Items that are licensed for a full year and used periodically throughout that licensed year should not be considered storage items on the days that they are not in use. My suggestion for changing UDO is the following. Up to four items should be allowed, boats, cars, trailer, per vacant lot, okay? Then with the following guidelines. And first of all, the reason for four is because of Section 3 of the UDO, they have a statement there that four boats are allowed on a residential property, and four just ties it to that requirement. To continue, items must be valid license, okay? They must have a valid license, i.e. they will be a tax revenue generator for the county and the state. Items must be for private use only. No commercial or business use vehicles should allow on a vacant lot. And to help people from stowing other people's trailers, items must be the property, the title property of the property owner, so the names would match. So, in conclusion, I would like to ask the commissioners, which would you prefer to live next door to? The unallowed or the allowed? My hope is that you, the commissioners, will take this for action and direct staff to take the necessary steps to change UDO or to define the term storage. That's all I have, ladies and gentlemen. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Denton?
Is that vacant lot, it's yours, I understand, is that adjacent to your residential lot?
No, the vacant lot is not. There's a house and another vacant lot between me. I live on a cul-de-sac in a pie-shaped lot. It's narrow in the front, gets wider in the back, but because of where the house is, and I got a swimming pool in the back, I can't get trailers in the back of the house.
So your neighbor next to you could either have the trailers in the house in the front yard next to them, or they could have them in the back of that vacant lot?
The neighbor has a vacant lot because it's an attached lot, he could have them there.
Have they ever complained?
No. Matter of fact, he has trailers parked there, but that's not the point. Well, the point is, is that obviously I was reported to the code enforcement officer, and I'm not the only one. There was like 26, or 26 people were violations of UDO. They varied in degrees. Most of them were trailers. Others were just really junky. So, well, I can see it. I just, I just think that the UDO today is just overly restrictive to what a person can do with vacant lot in a residential area. And as you can see, I have a garden there. The vehicles are behind the garden even, you know, there's playing room. They're less visible part there where they're illegal than they would be in front of my house. But like I told everybody, you have to look at the bright side. I could always use Roundup and kill all the grass in front of my house, park my trailers there, and I wouldn't have to buy a lawnmower.
Sir, I have a question. Do those vehicles, are they licensed and do they work?
All four, yeah. All four trailers are licensed. Two of them are boat trailers, one's a landscape trailer, one's a utility trailer. And the SUV there, that's my summer use because the air conditioning heating don't work, so I drive it in the summer. The other SUV I bought to pull the big trailer and the boat.
But they do have license on them?
They all have license.
Are they inspected?
Well, the vehicles, they have to be inspected, yeah. The trailers aren't, yes. Answer is yes. They meet all the, I mean, they're licensed for full use for the whole year. It's just a place to put them when I'm not using that day.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'll address this to Mr. Scanlon because it may have been before Mr. Woody's tenure here. I'm sure there was some logic leading up to this inclusion in the UDO where there are some conditions that it addresses specifically?
Yes, in fact, we can bring you examples, and no disrespect to Mr. Snyder, who has done his job of keeping things clean and neat. We do have vacant lots where the owner doesn't take that position. In fact, there's a couple that we're working on, that the boards are aware of, where there's vacant lots, and they don't keep everything organized on it. And it'd be, citizen complaints came up, and it necessitated a change or language in the UDO to address it.
Not arbitrary, there really was something that needed to be corrected that we're addressing.
That is correct.
At one point years ago, one of the problems was, we were having people from our friends north of us were bringing stuff and storing it all over the place in Currituck County. I think you remember, it was prevalent up in Tolls Creek area. They were bringing big storage trailers down and just, just taking a lot and just creating havoc in residential neighborhoods because they weren't ready to build, but they thought that was a good place to store. So that precipitated the county having to take a look at this ordinance, and unfortunately, someone like Mr. Snyder has called up in the web of what happened previously, and what he's asking is, is there some way of relief that you can tighten it down tight enough, narrow enough to where...
People who do do their business right can...
Right.
Well, then I'd address a query to Mr. Woody, then. Do you think something could be drafted that we might take a look at that would provide some relief in cases like this where citizens are being responsible, but still give us some mandatory or, I guess, discretionary enforcement powers if need be when the case was abused?
We can always draft something. It's, and you guys understand, it's a bit of a slippery slope because Mr. Denton's situation looks fine. Of course, there's a lot of other situations where people will take four or five trailers, and it won't look like that. If, if the board would like staff to attempt to draft something, we will do that. But it, but it is a slippery slope, so I'll just put that out there as a qualifier.
I would think it's some qualifiers. I'd want permission from adjoining neighbors and some kind of setback, of course, and perhaps some screening if, you know, going to be multiple vehicles. And I think maybe the nature of vehicles too. I don't think we want to see any storage containers and things like that. I think as long as they're legitimate licensed vehicles, which are, you know, roadworthy and used, and probably something we should take a look at.
I also think that maybe some of the language Mr. Snyder presented a while ago may, could be very helpful in looking at something, that they're licensed vehicles and insured or whatever the case may be, the language he was using a while ago. So, but we'll have staff look into that and try to come up with something to, for us to review.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Roy Hamilton. Please give your name and address, sir.
Roy Hamilton, 1244 Fair Winds Court, Corolla. I come before the board tonight that you give high priority dredging the boat ramp at the Whalehead Club and to the channel, to the deep water of the Sound. Local residents like myself would like to be able to use it year-round and not have to pick what days you can put a boat in the water. This use would be enjoyed as an amenity and a true value to the property of the Whalehead Club. Would like to see the greater use of the families of the boating community and the tourists that come during the summer. You have a local gentleman over there who runs a bait and tackle shop, 2008. He's still got the records. From, I think it was April the 1st through July the 8th, he had 605 calls wanting to know was there a place that they could put a boat in the water, leave the boat in the water, and be able to get in and out of Currituck Sound. And he had to tell them no. That would generate a lot of income for this county. Gas, you know, is tax revenue, so thank you, folks, for your time.
You don't know how much we want to see the same thing as you do. Mr. Martin and myself, the manager, our engineer have been attending meetings with core engineer representatives, and it's been like pulling teeth. It's tough, but we're committed, along with the Whalehead Trust, we're committed to try to keep moving this project forward. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ladies...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scanlon might want to relate how long we have been trying to accomplish this.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think our first attempt at trying to get the dredging permit was probably in the early 1990s. That was unsuccessful. We tried again in the early 2000s. That was unsuccessful, and we are in the process now in 2011, going back for our third try. As the chairman had mentioned, we have actually got a professional team assembled. They're putting together the applications and the permits now. We've had meetings with several of the regulatory bodies to look at the issues that were associated with the first two attempts so that we can look at how to overcome those. The two primary issues are the fact that it has been designated as an essential fish habitat. It has subaquatic vegetation there, and we cannot disturb that, so it's Marine Fishery, Army Corps issue, and the fact that they do not recognize the historic channel. So they're not looking at this as a maintenance program, they're looking at us dredging a new area. So those are two, two challenges that we have to overcome, the first one being the most significant. But we should be, probably in the springtime, actually starting to submit the permit for the project and cross our fingers.
I mean, I was born and raised directly across the Sound. I know historically there was a channel in there. I know that, seen it. And, but because it's been over a certain period of time, as Mr. Scanlon mentioned, it's not a maintenance issue anymore. Now you've got to go for the full vetting again, and boy, what a time. But anyhow, we're trying.
Next, we have Mr. Peter Bishop. Please come forward and stand at attention, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Bishop starts...
Yes.
Maybe the citizens need to start writing our congressional delegation, asking for their help because it is in the Corps of Engineers' hands where we're going to have to deal with.
I have a meeting with some of the core people on Wednesday up in that area, and I will make sure that I bring that up, along with Congressman Walter Jones, one of his representatives as well, on some other issues, and I will, I will see to it that that's brought up.
This is the same Corps of Engineers that thinks the potholes in the roads up in...
Same, same Corps.
Are actually wetlands.
Thank you.
I got you. No subaquatic, aquatic...
Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, sir. As I promised you two weeks ago at your meeting, I am here again to promote the Currituck 10th Annual, I'm sorry, Currituck Chambers 10th Annual Business Expo. The theme is history in the making, and we still have a few spots available for businesses and community organizations that want to take a part in this event. It is on Saturday, March 5th, from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM. We have several co-events going on along with the Chamber Expo. That is a blood drive going on from 10:00 to 2:00, so we're trying to get plenty of pints donated for the blood drive. We will have a remote, Beach 104 will be there, and just all a job fair as well. Several of the businesses who are participating will be advertising for available positions, so if you're looking for a job, certainly a great time to do that. And overall, we're just very excited for this event. Again, it's going to be Saturday, March 5th, from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM. And the evening before, we'll do a little sneak preview event for, for this, for some of our exhibitors and also Chamber members and the general public, so we'd love to see everybody there. And finally, a thank you to all of our sponsors. Town Bank and Town Insurance, Currituck County Departments of Economic Development and Tourism, Beach 104, Brynley Beach Vacations, The Pool Guy, East Carolina Bank, and Century Link. So that is that moment. Be sure to come out for that. For more information, you can call the Chamber at 453-9497 or go to currituckchamber.org. And one other item, I wanted to remind the citizens of Currituck County and everybody else here, that tomorrow evening at Chesapeake City Council at 306 Cedar Road is the proposed Chesapeake Expressway toll increase hearing. I have just received some updated docket information from them. They are, they have taken down the increase amounts for each of the tolls they're proposing except for the peak weekends, so it looks like they've caved a little bit to some commuter concerns and multi-axle vehicle concerns, but we're still in opposition, I believe, and the county has stated their opposition. Would love to see some residents and commuters up into the Hampton Roads area come with us and voice that opposition tomorrow night. That is 6:30 PM, 306 Cedar Road in Chesapeake. You must be signed up before 6:30 PM in order to speak at the meeting. So if you'd like more information, you can check our website, currituckgovernment.com, or contact the Economic Development Office.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Anyone have any comments about the Chamber? John?
Oh, very excellent question. The Business Expo will be at Currituck County High School. Can't believe I forgot that small detail. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Yance. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Rachel Yance. 1709 Windutht Street, Kittle Hills.
Could you pull the mic down a little bit, please, so everybody can hear you?
I'm here tonight to request, to petition off South Faraby Road, North Carolina Deener, to have gravel put on it. I came in September 20th of last year, and I haven't gotten anywhere with it yet. I haven't gotten a denial letter to not be petitioned, so I'm here to ask again. I know you're aware somewhat of that road and the problems with the piece of property, but people are still driving through it, and I would like to improve the road, the whole road, and the portion that I cannot improve is the piece that Currituck County owns. So y'all would have to be the ones to petition the state to put eight inches of gravel on it. So I'm here to request it, and if I can't get that, I'd like to have a denial letter that y'all are not willing to petition. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCree, would you like to comment on the status of that?
Yes, Ms. Yance said she was here, I guess, back in September, making a request to the county to allow for some use of county property located on Faraby Lane. That piece of property, particularly for new board members, is owned by the county and was subject to an order by the state of North Carolina for the county to cause it to be cleaned up because of the junk and debris and other material that had been placed upon that property illegally for many, many years by a prior owner. The county obtained that piece of property through a tax foreclosure sale. So the county spent several hundred thousand dollars, I believe, in order to clean the property up, and as part of the cleanup, the state of North Carolina required the county to place monitoring wells around the property and to regularly monitor the groundwater quality, as well as to place restrictive covenants upon the property and how it might be used in the future, which basically the covenants don't allow it to be used for anything, although we tried to get the state to at least allow it to be perhaps grassed over and used for some type of park for that little neighborhood that's along there, some purpose. But the, again, there should have covenants. The state of North Carolina required the county to place upon the property, does not allow it to be used for anything, including road access or roads across it. So Ms. Yance has had an application previously before the county for a project known as Rachel's Ranch, I believe.
Correct.
For various uses on property that's back behind, some ways behind the county's particular property, but also accessed by Owens Road, I believe, which does not have evidently the proper right-of-way to allow for access and development there of Ms. Yance's project unless she can find another route into the property, particularly for emergency vehicles. Nevertheless, we still are at the situation where the state of North Carolina would not allow the county to use this property for anything. The last meeting that we had with the state of North Carolina Deener officials was back in 2008, March of 2008, when the county engineer and I, and along with our consultant, environmental engineer, went to Raleigh trying to find a way to close out the settlement agreement and the violation originally issued to the county. At that time, they noted that there was still a remaining hotspot in one of the monitoring wells, which was again showing some form of contamination. They stated to us they believed the contamination coming from another adjacent piece of property, and believed that if the county required that property owner to clean up his property, that might well cure the hotspot and groundwater contamination problem on the county property, and then they might be willing to discuss with the county some means for allowing other types of use for the Faraby Lane site. The county has since placed that property owner, owner who's now from Pennsylvania, under notice of violation and has issued civil citations, which we now will have to end up going to court to seek correction of, as well as a court order requiring cleanup of the property, as we've had very little cooperation from that particular property owner. The bottom line, long story short, is the county cannot do anything with regard to the Faraby Lane property, cannot allow it to be used for a road or for access for any purpose whatsoever. And so the county would not be able to respond favorably, certainly at this point, to this request, in addition to the other issues that might arise with regard to the, to the use of public monies to improve property for private purpose and things of that nature. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I do. Okay. It is not at this time usable to be passed. Correct. It's not supposed to be passed at all, yet people drive up and down it all the time. And it's like a 500, the section of road I want, I want to pay to improve, okay, other than you're spending county money on putting in a petition to put gravel on your, like, 30-foot section of a 500-foot road. And I understand that if Deener says no, it's because it's not allowed, but you and I, our prior meetings, is you're the one that told me that I needed, would be needed to put in a petition to Deener to have it remodified for that use. So when I called Deener, Deener says that the county has to be in charge because I'm not the primary property owner, which I understand. So I don't understand why we can't petition to put gravel on it. No other use, nothing else, because also those paperwork says there's supposed to be a berm there. A berm, that you can't cross it.
The board would like me to respond.
There's no berm, never has been. People still drive across it. If there's contamination in the soil, then it's getting on my truck tires when I go through there.
I did have a conversation with Ms. Yance, had several conversations with her. At one point, I did suggest to her that, and after giving the same explanation I just gave to the board with regard to the county's use of the property, that if she would like, she certainly would be free to contact the Department of Environment and Natural Resources and discuss with them what options might be available. My understanding is they told Ms. Yance that the county would have to make the petition or request, that there'd be some modification, but as I've told you, in 2008, the state stated to me and the county engineer what would be necessary for them to even consider releasing the property from any of the restrictive covenants that currently exist upon it. With regard to access of the property, there should not be any access across the property. I've had that discussion with Ms. Yance as well. She has stated to me that she or others have certain real property rights and existing easements to cross that property for their own purposes. I have asked Ms. Yance to please have her attorney give me an opinion of what he believes to be the real property law relative to the use of that property by others. I've not received any such opinion as of this date. All I can again tell this board is what the state of North Carolina has required of the county and what the restrictive covenants prohibit with regard to use of the property.
So you will not petition? Or would the commissioners consider? Because as of today, no, but that doesn't mean that it can't be.
I would suggest that you do, I would suggest that you do, just as Mr. McCree just suggested, have your attorney get in touch with him, have him come up with his legal opinion as to how ingress and egress across that property is allowed and the accesses and that type of stuff, and then see what can get worked out. I think there's where lies.
Well, I think Mr. McCree brought up, Mr. McCree brought up something about using public property for private...
For a county vehicle.
Venture.
That is, there are several other issues. If I'm understanding the request correctly, that would cause further analysis to have to be done. For example, first of all, the general rule of law in North Carolina is that public monies may only be used for a public purpose, not for a private purpose. And so if this is to enhance a travel way for utilization of a private purpose, then it would be constitutionally prohibitive for the county to expend money for that purpose. But that's, that's another analysis that probably would be down the road somewhat depending upon if the county can even get to the point of curing the monitoring well that is problematic with the state and whether the state will then thereafter even allow the county to use this property for anything, other than to have it basically cordoned off from any use whatsoever.
Your opinion is that it would not be of any purpose for us to petition the state until we have cured that particular problem with the contamination?
That's correct. It would be futile.
Okay, in which case, if we can get that resolved, then we might be able to address that at that point.
There may be a time in the future where it could be addressed.
Well, I mean, you're saying, I'm sorry.
Another question. She states there's supposed to be a berm across there preventing use of the property?
I don't recall specifically the terms and conditions right offhand of the state settlement agreement with the county. I do know there was supposed to be maybe a fence or something at some point, but that's certainly something we'll take a look at this week.
If that's required, we need to get that...
This week, if that's required, then we'll make sure that it's installed, and we certainly are going to comply with the... are going to comply with the terms and conditions of the state settlement.
And so the last time that you know that the wells were, that the records of the wells being checked was three years ago?
I don't know when the last check was. I know certainly it was in 2008 because we went to the state with that information.
Who monitors the wells?
The county at the time had retained Quaible and Associates to do the monitoring and actually did the remediation engineering work for the county, is my recollection and understanding from looking at the files. I will also communicate with Quaible as well to make sure that we are in compliance with our well monitoring requirements as well.
One last question. That aside, the road going by there, does it meet the UDO in terms of sufficient right-of-way or easement width?
No, that is, I understand is part of the problem. Owens Road only has 18 feet in right-of-way. I think our UDO requires 20 feet minimum, and so that's been a complicating factor, certainly.
Faraby Lane does have the proper right-of-way for the fire protection. Owens does not have the proper right-of-way for fire protection.
Faraby Lane is, against the board, if you're not familiar with it, is of course a dirt road that kind of winds along and through various properties until you ultimately, I guess, can reach this particular site.
And it's one of the nicest kept roads for some reason. It's, I went down it yesterday, and it's flat as a whistle. I went through there maybe four or five months ago, it bumped my truck to pieces. I don't understand if no soil can be moved, how, and it wasn't us, you know, through the sections that are probably, that can be maintained, that's not touching Currituck's piece, you know, but like, it's a 20-foot wide, nice, graded road already. It just kind of needs the eight inches of gravel on it, and the problematic spot is the county piece, but the rest of the whole road is in good shape.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, we have Amy Underhill to give a presentation on Currituck Community Health Assessment. Please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
Amy Underhill, I am the Health Promotion Coordinator with Albemarle Regional Health Services, which is the seven district public health department, and Chair of Healthy Carolinians of Albemarle. Thank you for allowing me to come share a little bit of information about the community health assessment. You should each have a handout, and for the audience, I'm going to leave some when I leave, in case you want some further information. Every four years, the Department of Health and Human Services requires local health departments to conduct a community health assessment, and over the last year, Healthy Carolinians of the Albemarle and our three partnerships across the seven counties, the health department and our community partners have been involved in doing our community health assessment across our seven counties. And there's a couple of different phases, just to make everybody aware kind of how that process goes, and it is a year-long process that we do have to work on. We started in December of 2009, and one of the first steps is to collect and analyze secondary data, which includes information such as demographics, socioeconomic, and health data. Then we're also, the second phase is to collect opinion data from our community residents. Through this year, we chose to do a door-to-door survey with 80 residents in each one of our counties totaling 560 surveys across the seven counties. Then we also conducted some stakeholder interviews with our various community leaders in each one of our counties. So then we take all of that information and we use our community assessment team leaders, some work groups, to start to analyze and pull it together for one complete document to help us build, to look at the health concerns of our community, where we've been and where we're going. And some of the highlights for Currituck County that we have found since our last community health assessment in 2006 is, one thing that stood out to us was the school system. According to the 2008 end-of-grade test, third and eighth graders in Currituck County performed at higher rates of proficiency in both math and reading compared to students statewide. Also, in 2007 and 2008, Currituck County had a 9.9% greater number of high school graduates than the average North Carolina county. Some other things that stood out to us was that property crime rates have decreased in Currituck County between 2004 and 2009. This was lower than the state rate as a whole, and of the survey participants that we went door-to-door, 75% stated that they felt that Currituck County was a safe place to live. Another area of celebration for the county was the three senior centers that are strategically placed across the county, providing such a wide variety of activities for our seniors. Due to the demographic information that we collected, we saw that the senior citizen population is a very large portion of Currituck County, so having those amenities for that particular population has been a very positive aspect of the county. And of our survey participants, most of them noted that Currituck County was a good place to grow old. And then another good positive that stood out during the assessment and talking with our community leaders and citizens was that it's a strong network here of nonprofit agencies, community groups, and the faith community. And of course, on the other hand, there are some areas of concern that stood out to us. One thing is that in 2008, there were only 2.6 physicians per 10,000 people in the county, which is extremely low when you compare that to the state's average of 21.2 per 10,000 people. Also, another area of concern, between 2004 and 2008, 15.8% of babies born to women in Currituck County were born to women who smoked, and this was a rate 27.2% higher than the rest of the state's overall rate. Currituck County has a higher proportion of two-to-four and five-to-11-year-olds who are overweight or who may be on the verge of being obese as compared to the whole state. And then there was also comments that there needs to be more community awareness of services, education, outreach, and resource referral to some of those, especially in some of the outerline areas of the community, such as in Gibbs Woods, out in the, in Corolla area. It seemed like the, those pockets at the very ends of the community seemed like they felt a little out of the loop sometimes with knowing where to go for services. So that was one thing that also stood out to us. After we kind of looked at all of the areas of celebration and the areas of concern and took into account all our community groups who came together to analyze the data, our Healthy Carolinians of the Albemarle Partnership has to choose priority areas to work on for the next four years. And due to some of the things that really have not changed very much due to health statistics over the last four years, we've decided to still focus on some of the same two priority areas that we've had in the last four years, and that's obesity reduction among adults and youth. And when we were conducting our health survey, about 20% of those that we surveyed had been told by a doctor that they were overweight or obese. And then also, we're going to continue to focus on chronic disease management. The top three leading causes of death in Currituck County were heart disease, cancer, and cerebrovascular disease. Those rates have declined somewhat since our 2006 community health assessment, but not in an overall dramatic fashion, so it shows us that there's work that still needs to be done. And we know obesity is one of the causing risk factors for heart disease, cancer, and stroke, so they go hand-in-hand in working on those programs together. Several of the, I think about 20%, 22% of those interviewed said they had high cholesterol, and 24% had been told by a doctor that they had high blood pressure, which again are risk factors for heart disease. So we're going to be working on some community action plans, developing some interventions to continue to work with our faith community, also reaching out to our school systems, working with our patients through the health department, our local hospitals, cooperative extension, and many of our other community health partnerships to devise some interventions to continue to work towards striving to make Currituck, the rest of our counties, and North Carolina much healthier. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
How often do you do this?
Every four years.
Okay, so it'll be 2012?
Let's see, this was 2010, so 2014 will be our next one.
Okay, because I saw numbers of 2008.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to.
Unfortunately, if you're, if you're anyone with health statistics, unfortunately, they're always a couple of years behind, and then unfortunately, as soon as you get some data, it's outdated because they've printed something out. So most of the data that we had to use for this year's community health assessment is going to range probably anywhere from that '04 up to 2009. That's going to be your most recent data. It depends on what you're looking at. Some of the health statistics are probably closer to being '08 and '09 that they've analyzed and are ready for health professionals and others to review. As of now, some 2010 data is starting to come out, and then of course, this fell right in time when we're doing the census. So the majority, if you look at our full document, the majority of our socioeconomic and demographic information is still based off the 2000 census because we don't have concrete when we were doing this data for 2010. We do have projections of some of that data, but like I said, unfortunately, not all the health statistics are right on time with where we are right now. And you can access the full document of our community health assessment on the Albemarle Regional Health Services website, that's www.arhs-nc.org, and we have a handout of exactly how to pull up the community health assessment for each of our counties, and if you'd like your own copy, you can contact me at the health department here in Currituck, and I'll be glad to give you either a hard copy, a flash drive, or a CD of that.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring this up. I brought up at our Albemarle Hospital Board meeting, I guess it's been, what, seven, eight months ago, Mr. Scanlon, about, they're always, they have a community care clinic that's set up in Elizabeth City, it's supposed to service Currituck County and Camden County, and then they have one in Gates County. And I talked with Mr. Phil Donahue, who is president of that organization, and he said that they are more than willing to bring some more programs into Currituck County, but whenever they send proposals out, they don't get any, any response from any of the community organizations in Currituck County that they would like to have anything extra in Currituck County. So I believe he sent an email as recently as a week or so ago trying to schedule a meeting. Has that been scheduled? I think the 23rd to 24th, or someday was for a luncheon to discuss bringing some more services.
Services.
Services to Currituck County, and I think I saw a couple commissioners respond that one day was okay. Has anybody responded? Is that set up? Is there going to be a luncheon, or what?
That's March.
Is it March?
I don't recall any email that you're talking about.
Is it?
I remember seeing it. I think I responded as to available times as well.
Yeah, I think you and Butch, I saw respond to it, or Mr. Petry, responded to it, and now is an opportune time for you to work in conjunction with Albemarle Health to try to bring some of those services to help with this. So is there some way that y'all can interact, or?
We do interact.
It's March, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
March 24th or 25th?
We do interact a lot with Albemarle Hospital and Albemarle Foundation. Several of their nurses from their community care clinic, as well as some of their nurses at the hospital who run their stroke program, are on our Healthy Carolinians of the Albemarle Partnership, and so we do try to work in conjunction with programs that they have ongoing as well throughout our whole community, and maybe we haven't done as much in Currituck as there probably could be done, and so now, like I say, it's a very timely opportunity for us to be able to continue to provide more services in the community based off the community health assessment. So we'll continue to look at forging more of those partnerships here in the county.
Okay, and Mr. Etheridge is going to forward that email to Mr. Scanlon, and then he can send it back out again, so if anyone didn't get it.
And one thing we found, I conducted a lot of, did a lot of knocking on the doors in the county, actually conducting the primary survey that we did, and one thing that came across is that people are very, they know that there's lack of resources, especially for healthcare in our county, and they've gotten very complacent about going outside of the county for care, so I don't know if that has kind of, you know, maybe inhibited the opportunity for more to be here in the county, because people are just so used to leaving the county for some services, you know, you just, you never know. So you have to take all of that into account about what the community needs, what their opportunities are, so I found that to be really interesting when we were doing the surveys. And you'll see a lot of that information we also have in the assessment, and you can actually see of those who were surveyed, how many people leave the county for healthcare services, and we have it broke down by, whether it's Elizabeth City, Chesapeake, Outer Banks, so on and so forth. So that might be really interesting for you to take a look at, how many people are leaving the county and where they're going for their healthcare.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Along those lines, what you were just talking about, 2.6 physicians per 10,000 people. As a senior citizen, that gives me cause for concern. What can we do as a board to help you? I'm not asking for an answer tonight, but maybe a game plan for down the road, what can we do as a board to remedy, you know, that situation?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I do think that putting our heads together to kind of figure out how we could do that, it's not going to be an answer that we come up with overnight, unfortunately. It's going to take a lot of planning, it's going to take a lot of resource development, but I think with this data and seeing that people are more concerned about their health, people really are wanting to know more about how they can get services in the county to help them, whether it's just with primary care or it's for some type of a chronic disease that they're looking for that. So yeah, I think there's, this is the opportunity where we start to look more at what we can offer in our county so we can be healthier. And I think one thing that we can all do, everyone in this room, is look at our own health as well. I think that's where it starts.
To go there.
That's where it starts. I know it's a struggle every day for everyone to try to be more physically active and try to eat healthy, but trying to make a conscious effort for each one of us to try to do that every day is going to make a big difference as well, so that's my charge. After I leave tonight, everybody make some healthier choices each and every day, and it'll go a long ways in the long run.
I think part of the answer to Mr. Petry's question is, when we were planning the YMCA, I mean, there's going to be a facility there.
Exactly.
And Albemarle Hospital will be sending physicians there to be able to provide services at that site.
Exactly, and I think that that's a great step in the right direction, and then just having the YMCA here in the county as well, because that was another key thing that was mentioned as one of the top community concerns when we were doing the survey, is the lack of recreational resource opportunities here in the county, and we were doing this back the beginning of last year, so I'm sure some people weren't as aware that the YMCA was coming to the county, so I think that will help to remedy that as well.
Yeah, but I think, I think it's important for the public to know that there will be facilities there.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, one of the causes I have is we're really focusing on economic development, and I know that's one of the things that companies look at when they come to a particular area.
Exactly.
Is, is the medical facilities in the area, so that's.
Yeah, they look at the medical facilities, they also, believe it or not, they look at the obesity rate for the community. They actually do, so, yeah, and I do think that that could be some of what is the inhibiting healthcare providers from coming to the area is economics, actually, and you look at the amount of people that leave the county for work and for jobs, that, you know, that's something to look at. So it's a long-term plan, as everybody's health, it should be a long-term plan, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
You so much.
Have a nice evening. Item number four, next we have Janie Mercer from the Economic Improvement Council to do a presentation on the Anti-Poverty Plan. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please give your name and address for the record.
I'm Janie Mercer at 100 David Drive, Moyauk, North Carolina.
Thank you.
I am a case manager for the Economic Improvement Council Communitarian Services Block Grant Program. I'm here to just give you a brief summary of our 2011, 2012 Anti-Poverty Plan. The Communitarian Services Block Grant Program is authorized under the Communitarian Services Block Grant Act. Our purpose and goal is to provide assistance to state and local communities working through local community action agencies and other neighborhood-based organizations for the reduction of poverty, and to empower low-income families and individuals to become fully self-sufficient. To accomplish this goal, CSBG must strengthen the community capabilities for planning and coordination of federal, state, local, and other assistance related to the elimination of poverty. The Communitarian Services Block Grant Program is administered by the Economic Improvement Council and governed through a tripod board as directed by the Block Grant Act. The board fully participates in planning, implementation, and evaluation. The board fully participates in planning, implementation, and evaluation of the CSBG program. The Communitarian Services Block Grant Program will be funded for the period of July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012. The Communitarian Services Block Grant serves 10 counties, and they are Camden, Chawan, Currituck, Dare, Gates, Hyde, Proquemmons, Passapetance, Terre, and Washington. This program will serve 21,783 low-income individuals. The Communitarian Services Block Grant holds an annual public hearing in each county to receive the input in the development of the program to be offered through the CSBG program. The program that we have to offer for the 2011-2012 program year is the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. The primary components of the Self-Sufficiency Program include case managers, myself. To enroll council and provide supportive services to a minimum of 90 clients, eligible clients in the program must meet the 100% poverty guideline. Our services include the job refer placement, housing refer placement, childcare assistance, and visualization assistance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice evening. Item five, Public Hearing in Action. PB 88-66 Villages at Ocean Hill PUD requests to amend an SUP to relocate an automobile parking area adjacent to NC 12 Ocean Trail. Property is located on NC 12 and adjacent to Lakeside Drive and the villages at Ocean Hill Waste Water Disposal Area. Tax map 114, parcel 3P, Piper Branch, Outer Banks Township. We have numerous people signed up to speak at this time. And Mr. McCray, I'm going to hand this over to you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Got to swear them in.
Well, we'll take care of that. I think, first, I think it might be helpful, since we haven't had a special use permit hearing in a while, for me just to give a brief explanation, particularly for the public, and also a reminder to the board what a special use permit is all about, and what you may and should consider in determining whether to amend, in this case, the special use permit. This is an amendment to a special use permit, and in any event requires you to comply with the same process and procedures as you did when you issued the original special use permit. A special use or special use permit refers to a situation in which a particular kind of use is permitted in a zoning district, not as a matter of right, but under ordinance provisions that allow the Board of Commissioners to issue a special use permit when the board makes specified findings. Pursuant to the Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance, the Board of Commissioners must be able to find and conclude from evidence presented during the course of the hearing that the application is complete, the proposed use of the applicant's property is among those listed in the table of permissible uses as a special use permit, the conditions proposed meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance, the special use will not endanger the public health or safety, the special use will not injure the value of adjoining or abutting property and will be in harmony with the area in which it is located, the special use will be in conformity with the land use plan or other officially adopted plan, and finally, that the special use will not exceed the county's ability to provide adequate public facilities. For the purposes of this hearing, the board will be sitting as a quasi-judicial body. That means the Board of Commissioners is required to comply with procedural rules much like that of a trial court, and to provide for the constitutional right to due process, such as sworn testimony of witnesses, no reliance upon hearsay testimony for a critical finding of fact, and the direct and cross-examination of witnesses. Accordingly, those offering testimony will be placed under oath, and only sworn testimony will be considered by the Board of Commissioners in making this decision. The Board of Commissioners' findings must be supported by competent material and substantial evidence presented during the course of the hearing. Competent evidence is generally understood to mean that evidence which is legally admissible in a court of law. Pursuant to Section 168, 393 of the North Carolina General Statutes, the requirement for competent evidence does not preclude, does not prevent reliance by the Board of Commissioners on evidence that would not be admissible in a court of law if, first, the evidence was admitted without objection, or, secondly, the evidence appears to be sufficiently trustworthy and was admitted under such circumstances that it was reasonable for the Board of Commissioners to rely upon it. As further provided by Section 168, 393 of the North Carolina General Statutes, competent evidence does not include the opinion testimony of lay witnesses as to any of the following issues or matters. The use of property in a particular way would affect the value of other property, the increase in vehicular traffic resulting from a proposed development would pose a danger to the public safety, and matters about which only expert testimony would generally be admissible under rules of evidence applicable to the trial courts. In addition, the board may not make a critical finding based solely on hearsay. Hearsay means a statement not made at the hearing that the proponent seeks to have admitted as evidence of the truth of the matter asserted in that statement. A witness or expert needs to be present so questions can be asked about the particulars of their testimony. An example, of course, is so often we have persons who would like to present to the board a petition or a letter for the board to consider as evidence, but, of course, no one is able to ask questions of the petition or the letter, and thus, that is hearsay that would not be admissible. As provided in Section 14.4 and 11.7.1 of the UDO, the burden of presenting a complete application required by the UDO to the Board of Commissioners is upon the applicant. Once a completed application has been submitted, the burden of presenting evidence to the Board of Commissioners sufficient to lead the board to conclude that the application should be denied shall be upon the parties urging the denial unless information presented by the applicant in its application and at the hearing is sufficient to justify a reasonable conclusion that a reason exists to deny the application. So, with that, we'd ask anyone who intends presenting the evidence during the course of this hearing to come forward and be sworn by the chairman.
We have Chip Friedman, James Blaylock, Fran Hamilton, Ed and Karen Ish. Left hand on the Bible, raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Woody?
The evidentiary phase of the hearing is, of course, now open. And as is our usual process, planning staff will present the case review and analysis, and then we'll proceed to hear from the applicant, and then any persons who have any other interest with regard to the application. Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. McCray. Ocean Hill Commercial LLC is requesting to amend their special use permit tonight to relocate an automobile parking area adjacent to NC 12. And I'll show you a slide in a second that shows the old location and the new proposed The property, which is outlined in red on the previous map and this map, is currently zoned general business, and it's located in the villages at Ocean Hill Plan Unit Development. In your UDO, you currently, the county currently requires that any commercial uses receive a special use permit in PUDs prior to the use beginning. Your UDO also requires that any amendments or any major amendments to a special use permit must be approved by the permit issuing authority. So, in other words, if somebody gets a special use permit issued, and they seek to, you know, to amend that, or to move forward with a major amendment, you as the Board of Commissioners are required to approve that amendment. And that's why this case is here before you tonight. The original special use permit for this property was approved by the Board of Commissioners on July 7, 2008. In this approval, the parking lot was located, or is located, to the rear of the property. On the photograph, you can see on the left side the original location of the parking lot. And, of course, that was at the rear of the property, kind of out of view from NC 12, and mostly away from many of the residential dwellings in the area. And I also want to note that the original special use permit was in your agenda packets, and the conditions on that permit will carry forward unless modified here tonight. There are several conditions that go along with that. The applicant, to this point, has not approved with that original parking lot approval, or not moved forward with the original approval. And you can see the site plan here showing the parking lot layout towards the rear of the property. And, of course, now the applicant's shifting to move that parking area eastward closer to NC 12. During previous meetings with the applicant, staff has expressed concern with the screening of the automobile area if it is located adjacent to 12, and thus closer, in closer proximity to some of the residential dwellings. The parking area, if shifted eastward, if the board does approve that, and there's a, again, on this particular site plan, north is down, so don't let that get you turned around. On this particular plan, if the parking lot is shifted eastward, staff would recommend or would encourage the board to consider requiring the applicant to either preserve some of the existing vegetation and/or add additional vegetation to help screen that parking lot, being in closer proximity to dwellings and NC 12. I will note, the applicant did, you have not seen the site plan before tonight's meeting. The applicant provided this earlier today. However, I'll also note that staff has not had sufficient time to review this plan that's submitted before you tonight. And, of course, with that, we're not in a position to recommend any conditions to accompany this plan tonight. Should the board, however, be inclined to move forward and amend the SUP tonight, staff would recommend that a revised site plan be submitted to TRC for approval prior to any land disturbing activities commencing. I know the applicant's here tonight and can probably address some of your questions. I know there's some other folks here, too. At this point, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have for staff.
Any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Woody at this time?
I do, too. Okay. I noticed in paragraph C under there, "Permit's valid for two years and will expire on July 7, 2010." Work has not begun on the project at that time. Has he begun project, work on the project?
No, but the General Assembly adopted the North Carolina Permit Extension Act, which suspended any vesting provided by the local government. So, when this permit was initially adopted, yes, it would be an expired permit, but due to the intervention of the General Assembly, it is still a vested permit.
Okay, so hopefully that's last case.
He is still valid, yes.
I have a question. Mr. Woody? Generally, when we see a special use permit, it's a full packet. Is this a complete application?
Conceivably, it could be a complete application now, but I don't, I don't think it was when it was submitted, no.
Okay, clarify that for me. It could be now because of the site plan we got today.
But I have not had time to review the plan, so I'm not in a position to really give a recommendation on that plan.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Any questions for Mr. Woody?
Not at this time.
I got one question. I'm looking here at, under D, "Other Conditions." It says, number seven, "The applicant shall report a boundary line agreement with Currituck County or execute a quitclaim deed to settle the disputed property ownership prior to the use beginning." I was not here when this was granted, so I'm curious as to what that is about. I see it says, "No commercial vehicles." I know that was an area of concern. But then I look through this again, and I see a quitclaim deed to settle a disputed property. What is that?
I will, I will comment on that briefly. If the, the map could be displayed, you'll see on the aerial photograph, again, the red boundary is the subject property. And it's going to be difficult to see, but in the, kind of towards the rear, there's a rectangular piece of property, a yellow boundary line that intercedes or overlaps Mr. Friedman's property. At the time, in what the county, well, I guess on the tax records, this is indicated to be what's called a former cattle dip location that was provided or given to the county by deed, by quitclaim deed. And this original proposal, the parking lot and a portion of the access of the parking lot actually crossed that property, which we currently recognize as county property. So, that condition says that whatever the issue of cattle dip, they should be resolved before that property's included in any kind of development proposal.
Have those been resolved?
Not to my knowledge.
Has it been resolved?
I mean, I'm not sworn or competent to testify, but I will say, no, it has not been.
Any further questions?
What are we acting on?
Mr. Friedman has requested that you act on this, this proposal, or the site plan that's produced or displayed on the screen that shifts the automobile parking area eastward closer to NC 12.
But you don't have a package upon which you can render any technical review opinion or planning department opinion as to compliance with any of the conditions?
I do not. At the time of preparing this and putting it before you, I did not.
Any questions for Mr. Woody? If not, then now can I have any question for Mr. Woody?
Yes. Mr. Woody, under the existing special use permit, doesn't it say that we have to go back to TRC anyway for approval of a completed plan?
It does.
So, this proposed revised plan would be the same exact scenario as the other permit?
It will. Either way, we'll most likely have to go back to the TRC to reflect any conditions or any approval requirements the board may make tonight or at a future meeting.
Right. So, this plan that's here now would have to pass TRC if the commission agreed on it anyway?
Yes.
That's the only question I had for him.
Can I get a clarification there when you say, "Pass TRC"? Is TRC actually going to approve it? My opinion would be that if we grant a special use permit, then TRC's going to comment on that. Are they, do they have some enforceable authority to deny the use under those conditions?
We don't have it to deny the use, but if the board establishes a use, and along with that use, you're establishing a location which is, which is shown on the site plan, what the TRC does is then, once you've established the conditions of how that use operates and where it operates, we then make sure that it is installed and built according to the construction standards and the technical requirements of the UDO. So, yes, you approve the use, and then the staff approves the more somewhat mundane but, but technical requirements that relate to the use. But our UDO does require that a site plan be accompany a special use permit, so you know what you're approving and where you're approving it.
Any questions for Mr. Woody? All right. Mr. Friedman, you may present your application or any evidence that you might have at this point. And if you please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Charles S. Friedman. I live at 500 Pacific Avenue, Virginia Beach, Virginia. And I would just like to reserve some time after the other folks speak. Mr. Woody's already explained most of everything already.
Just to understand, it's your time to present your evidence or your case. You may reserve time-
Rebut.
-to rebut. Is that what you're doing?
Yes, and also, of course, I'll object if someone says something I disagree with.
Could I ask, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Friedman, I'm looking at this, and the proposed parking lot was on the bank outside of view of the highway and everything, and now you have moved it forward quite a ways, almost onto NC 12. Can you give us the reason for that?
Yes, there's several reasons. The first reason is because it, there were several requirements in the existing special use permit that were either unachievable by us to date for reasons that were outside of our control. Also, another reason would be we don't have to build a long road back to the other parking lot. We would just have to build an apron and enter the parking lot very, from a very short distance from Highway 12. There's some existing brush that's there that we plan to leave, and we don't believe that it would be a eyesore or any kind of problem for the community.
Another question, sir. You're building a parking lot there, and what is its use going to be primarily for?
It's going to primarily be for us to rent to rental companies that's going to build the parking lot, for off-road vehicles, for people coming to the beach on the off-road to keep the traffic down on the, north of our property in Swan Beach and North Swan and Carova, for real estate companies to be able to have their guests parked there and shuttle them up the beach. Many people come without four-wheel drive, and they attempt the four-wheel drive experience anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for Mr. Friedman?
I have, I have one. Was, did you originally apply for the parking lot in the back?
Yes.
All right, I'm understanding why you applied for it in the back, why you just didn't do it up front in the first place.
I don't know why my dad picked it in the back, but actually, when we got started with the process, I don't think we realized we had to put all this gravel on some road all the way to the back. And as we got going with the process, we felt like the process was a burden, so we just wanted to get it over with. So, we agreed to some- So we agreed to some of these conditions and, you know, to, to build just a little, we had the same issue the county does. They own a piece of property in the back, and it doesn't seem to be economical for them to build a road to the back of their property either. So we were just following the county.
How far is it from the front of, of the new location to the old location approximately?
I don't know, to be honest with you. Maybe Mr. Woody can measure it.
I, I don't know. I don't, I don't have the ability to measure here on the spot.
How far setback is this from NC-12?
It's set back, I believe, by 25 feet, which is more than the UDO requires. I believe the UDO requires 10 feet. And we do agree to the trees and any other kind of landscaping requirements that the UDO requires, and we're not interested in it being an eyesore. We just wanted to provide a service that was needed and us to generate a little bit of revenue on our property. My dad bought the property in 1971, and we haven't made a penny with this parcel since then.
If you do the parking lot, will it be paved with asphalt or gravel or what?
No, there are some areas which will have rock or stone, but the other parts will be sand, like the other parking lots in Corolla. It, it will fit in with the, with the area.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is this a permanent parking lot or is this something you see as temporary?
This is something that we see for the next five years as the economy comes back. We would like to develop a little village on this property one day, a mixed-use village. We were, we were trying, we, we know in Corolla that there's a lot of illegal parking going on, so we were, we were trying to fill a need and, and use our property and, and make a buck.
One more, please.
Hope so.
If I understood what you said earlier, it is designed to help the rental companies keep excess traffic off the beach?
Yes.
I have a question too, related to that, for the actual use. If it's used for rental companies, it probably is gonna be somewhat seasonal. Vehicles won't be going in and out of this on a regular basis, daily basis, and you're, you're anticipating they will be going in there for parking when the turnover happens?
That's correct, weekly.
And then the rest of the time, vehicles would just be sitting there and belong to those?
Yes, we don't propose any lighting. We don't propose any noise issues.
What are they gonna carry people up and down the beach in?
I think Mark Thompson has a big, like, monster vehicle.
They're not gonna park that there?
No.
How, how are you gonna monitor this? You said you make a buck. Tell me how you make a buck. I mean, you have a, an attendant or what?
We're hoping to rent it year-round to rental companies, and, um, this has been something my dad's been talking about doing for four or five years, and, you know, we're just trying to get to the finish line.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
This, this, we know we've got a storage problem with the commercial vehicles. There's a dispute between yourself and the gentleman who had a special use permit that is now expired and doesn't have a proper easement. This parking lot, because I've received several emails, but this parking lot is not for commercial, in other words, there's not gonna be a bulldozer's park there, there's not gonna be an excavator, it's gonna be strictly cars or, or...
Correct. It's gonna be strictly for cars for the off-road, and we do plan to come back and file a separate, separate application on this property in the, further to the west for a stockyard and for some other commercial vehicles in the near future.
But this area was, because like I said, I received emails saying that this was gonna be used for parking bulldozers and, but it's just gonna be like...
That's correct.
If I'm going to the north beach, I can drive my car there, then get in with my brother or whatever and go in his vehicle to the north beach, or the realty company would take me up there or whatever.
That's correct.
And I just leave my car there until it's time to come home. I get back in my car and then I drive back home.
That's correct.
Okay. I've got a better understanding.
One question then, related to that. Is the lot gonna be secured in any fashion or is it just gonna be unattended?
He's gonna lease it.
What do you mean? Is it gonna have a fence around it or something to...
That's up to the tenant. We didn't wanna make that a burden if they didn't feel like it was a security issue. You have several other parking lots there in the village that are not fenced in, that are just some sand and some concrete bumpers, and, um, we've never had a safety issue in Corolla so far, knock on wood. So we, we weren't concerned about that issue at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Friedman at this point?
If you look at the map, is this, in the area, there's a road that goes along your property line? Mr. Woody, yeah, the, there, is that a road that's, that's going, I guess, south along right there, Mr. Woody?
Yeah, that, that is, is known as the Pot and Lane easement. It, it does go south and it eventually connects to an, an illegal access over one of Mr. Friedman's other lots, and then meanders down to the Coral Lane right-of-way, which you'll probably receive testimony on later tonight about.
But that is a...
It's an easement. It's not, it's not a right-of-way.
Did I hear illegal access?
It does have, it does have one, yes, which is...
Not, not involving us.
It doesn't relate to this SUP specifically tonight.
Does Mr. Friedman own that road that's going along right there?
No.
Who, do we know who owns that?
Uh, the land is owned by, by Mr. Jim Bickford under Mid-Atlantic Builders LLC.
So if this were denied and Mr. Friedman wanted to get access to that lot back there, could he, could he work out an arrangement with that road?
I, I believe that Mr. Friedman, through the easement, has rights to use the Pot and Lane access.
Um, we do, but we have a lawsuit against those people, so we're not gonna be asking them for any favors at the moment.
Okay, I'm just saying, just in case if, if, for whatever reason...
They might ask us for one.
Okay, I'm just finding an easy way, you know, maybe an easy solution. Okay, thank you.
Was there not also a northern access that had been proposed to come through that property back to that point at one point in time?
Yes, sir. You have a good memory, there isn't, there is a northern access that comes down past the clubhouse there at the Village of Ocean Hill. And it, actually, I, I believe your property owners in Village of Ocean Hill might have a little bit more of a headache if we use that for this purpose. Instead of coming right off Highway 12, it would come up and around. And, um, yes, we have four or five points of entry. I, I've looked up and down Highway 12, Mr. Chairman, and I've seen several parking lots in front of buildings, and, um, ours certainly isn't gonna look any worse. And, um, I do believe that we can address with the staff, with the TRC, to comply with the UDO on the site plan regarding landscaping and drainage and anything else that's required.
Any other questions from the board, from Mr. Friedman at this point? All right. If not, then, Mr. Friedman, you're gonna reserve for rebuttal, and, Mr. Chairman...
Next we have James Blalock.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. James Blalock at 1274 Santa Rosa Drive in Corolla. First, if I may, I'd like to wish everybody a happy President's Day and commend you for being here on, on a holiday. Second, I'd like to rebut a couple of things that were just said. Number one, we live in the villages of Ocean Hill and we're surrounded by renters during, during the season. Renters do not go to a house and stay in the house. It is unrealistically, unrealistic to expect that people will drive to the parking lot, park their car, and not come back for a week. They'll be in and out of that parking lot. That, I think everybody recognizes, and frankly, I think that's what, what Currituck County and Corolla wants. We want people out, spending money, going to businesses, going to restaurants, et cetera. So I think that's unrealistic. I also heard that we're going to put, Mr. Friedman wants a parking lot for commercial vehicles further west. And, and here again, we run into the problem, they just said that it was unrealistic to put a road in because it would be too expensive and not economically viable, and that's why they wanna change the existing parking lot to the current parking lot. So why is it would be viable to put the road in for the commercial vehicles and, and not keep the parking lot where it exists and, and put the road in for passenger vehicles? I'm an elected board member for the Home Association in the villages, so I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of them. And really, we have three fundamental points. And the first is that we do not object to change. We understand that this is commercial property and it will be developed as commercial property, but we do believe it should be developed in, in the character of the neighborhood and the architecture of the neighborhood and the landscaping of the neighborhood. That, that's one of our requirements. We, we do that with the, the individual lots in the community, and we expect the same should happen with the, with the commercial. Secondly, moving that parking lot close to 12, what, what nobody has said here tonight is that the county put in almost a million-dollar path that runs parallel to 12, which is 10 feet long, and it's approximately 10 feet in from the, from 12. So that's, that's almost 20 feet, and we heard that this parking lot is, is 25 feet from 12. So that gives a five-foot buffer between this parking lot and that path. And the villages of Ocean Hill, we gave up part of our, excuse me, open space property to develop a pocket park for the county off of the path, as well as we allowed the county to go through parts of our community to, to preserve, you know, the aesthetics of, of the path. And we were more than happy to do this, but this seems that this project kinda, you know, in our minds, gives new meaning to that old Counting Crows song that, you know, pay paradise to put up a parking lot. It's just, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. The last point I would like to make is if you go to the county's website and look at the materials that were provided as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, was the last time I was on the website, and you look at the map, that map is very misleading, it's an aerial view of the area, but it doesn't include the county path on that. Now, I don't know whether this was done intentional or what, but it is very deceiving not to have the, the county map on that photograph, 'cause you cannot tell how close that parking lot really is to the path. In essence, I think, think those are at least three considerations that, that I hope the, the board will, will take into account when they come up with their decision. Thank you.
Members of the board have any questions for Mr. Blalock?
Yeah, to summarize, one of your main objections is, is he said it's gonna be 25 foot, and you're saying the bike path is 10 foot from the road, and then it's 10 foot, so we're gonna be down to actually five-foot buffer between the bike path and the parking lot.
Right. If you, if you look on the website and it's, and Mr. Woody had it up, the area's in red, you will find that that parking lot extends, and it's, it's right here. You can see, oh, there's a concrete path on the other side in our area, and there's actually a bridge where there's wetlands where they couldn't put the path in, and we had, they had to construct the bridge. And that, that parking lot, that's, the parking lot will come closest to that area, the, the southern part of that path.
Objection.
What would be the basis of the objection?
What was his facts saying that this is close to that wetlands?
What I am saying is that there is a path, the county path has a bridge, and they put that bridge in because there was obviously water underneath it, or they wouldn't have put it in.
My objection is that that path is to the south of this, about 600 feet.
Okay. No, it's not. Let, Mr. Woody, could you put that map up again?
Just a minute, we're gonna, we're gonna have order here. There's been objection, Mr. Chairman. I recommend that, that you deny the objection based upon the testimony, which was just Mr. Blalock's observations relative to the map, and the board can then take that, that statement for what it's worth. Denied. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Blalock?
Could I ask one thing, Mr. Blalock? If I may, Mr. Chairman? The, this is a temporary use of that property, and it does alleviate some of the parking problems that obviously you all face up there during the summer with so many people there. And your objections here have been noted, and, but he does have a right for common use, you know, of his property and everything.
And we're, we're perfectly comfortable with the parking lot where it's currently located. I, I can't understand why all of a sudden we come back, a decision's been made, and no action's been taken on this lot, and someone that's cynical may say, "Well, maybe this was the plan all along."
Okay, so you have no objection, but just the movement of the parking lot to where it's being proposed right now?
Absolutely. We understand that it, it is private property and we, we respect that.
And you would prefer it not to be there, but to go back to where it originally was planted?
Yeah, I think it's, it's just an eyesore, it's one of the last things that people that are going up to the four-wheel-drive area see, and we wanna leave that impression of, of a parking lot.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Blalock? If not, Mr. Chairman, next, next witness?
Next, we have Fran Hamilton.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, what, what actually was the objection, was it from Mr. Friedman, was it overruled or...
The, the chairman denied or overruled the objection, and then, of course, I suggested to the board that you can then take Mr. Blalock's statement for, for what it's worth to the board in making its ultimate decision.
So we disregard what Mr. Blalock said as factual?
No. The, the objection was overruled.
Chip, Friedman's...
Objection.
Objection.
So I'll make sure.
Hello. I'm Fran Hamilton, 1244 Fairlands Lane, Corolla. First, I'll have to start with an apology. I was not able to access information about this project online because it was not online prior to my leaving Corolla to come here. I think that's been determined tonight, so some, and also I did not have the benefit of your discussion about what can and cannot be submitted as evidence. But I basically, as a citizen of Currituck County and a resident of Village at Ocean Hill, would like to say two things. First of all, when you go into our community, you pass a landscaping enterprise, and then you go a little further south, you see the, the bridge that Mr. Blalock, Blalock was talking about, then you see a sign on the right that says, "Villages at Ocean Hill." Then you go up a little further, and if my understanding is correct, again, couldn't see this online today, but the sign for this special, for this permit occurs after you've already gotten into the Villages at Ocean Hill. I understand that Mr. Friedman and that anyone who owns private or commercial property has a right, particularly if it's a lot, you have the right and the expectation to develop or to improve that lot. I don't object with that. I do wanna point out that what I see driving to my house in Villages at Ocean Hill is that the entrance way to this parking lot will come after you've seen a welcome to Villages at Ocean Hill. So to me, as a resident, that makes me feel like whatever is done there is going to look like it's a part of the community. Therefore, my second point is, if there's going to be a parking lot there, I hope that there'll be adequate landscape buffer so that people coming into the neighborhood, seeing the Villages at Ocean Hill sign on the right, going a very short distance and on the left seeing a parking lot, I don't want them to see the parking lot. I would like for the parking lot to have a, a good, strong landscape buffer. I would like to say, as a member of the Landscape Committee in our association, we spend over $50,000 a year on our landscaping. We approve cul-de-sacs, improve and, and landscape cul-de-sacs every year. This year, we're doing two more. We take care of our public areas. We devote a large percentage of our budget to landscaping. This gentleman said, and I believe you're the county attorney, one of the things that you mentioned, or one person, maybe it was Mr. Woody, mentioned was that this project would have to be in harmony with. I wrote down in harmony with, didn't get the rest, but I'd just like to say, as a resident of Villages at Ocean Hill, if this project moves forward, Mr. Friedman has every right to improve his commercial land, but if it moves forward, I sincerely hope it will be in harmony with the Villages at Ocean Hill, with our landscaping plan as it now exists, because the turn-in for this property will occur after the "Welcome to Villages at Ocean Hill" sign on the right. Okay? Thank you.
Any questions from Mrs. Hamilton, from any board member?
No, but, Mr. Chairman, I've got a question about the objection. I wanna make sure it's understood. Mr. Friedman, this gentleman said that they was talking about wetlands at the distance, I think, and there was a discrepancy about the distance in wetlands. Mr. Friedman objected... Mr. Friedman objected it was overruled, if that's right?
The attorney recommended that we overrule it, yes.
I'm trying to determine, is there or is there not wetlands involved? And that what your objection was, was the, the distance and the wetlands?
Yeah, my objection is, is that this property doesn't have any wetlands on here that we're trying to do this parking lot, and there's no bridge on this particular parcel. That was my statement.
That's essentially, that's essentially testimony that's certainly be appropriate for Mr. Friedman to bring up in his rebuttal at that time.
Okay. Just, sure, I understand.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Hamilton? If none, then, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate to call the next witness.
Mr. Ed Ish.
Yes, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to come up. My name's Ed Ish and resident of Currituck, resident in Currituck County and own home in Bell's Island and also at 1203 Bismarck in Ocean Hill in Corolla. And with that, I'd like to convey the rest of my time to Karen Ish, who's a member of the board at Ocean Hill, and she's here on the behalf of the president, who has got prior commitments in Raleigh and can't be here tonight. So with that, I'll cede my time to Karen.
Thank you, Mr. Ish. It would be appropriate to call Mrs. Ish.
Karen Ish.
We've got it, thank you. Karen Ish, 112 Teal Drive, Currituck, and 1203 Bismarck Drive in Corolla. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Ocean Hill One Homeowners Association, and I'm here representing our association. We're the community to the east of the Villages of Ocean Hill at the point of the proposed parking lot. We share the concerns of the Villages Board with respect to this parking lot. We're also concerned about the continued haphazard development of this entire parcel. There seems to be absolutely no long-term vision for what is going to happen to this entire piece of property that was shown earlier in red. We keep getting permits applied for and pulled and changed and amended and temporaried, and there just doesn't seem to be a whole lot of long-term vision here. A1 Towing has been operating back there. They don't have a special use permit because of unresolved access issues. EnviroTech and the county water department are operating using temporary accesses. The Pontons lost their direct access when they put in the sewage plant and they were given a long and winding trail wrapping around getting to and from their property. This is-
Objection. The Pontons haven't lost their access, they still have a deeded access to the property.
That's, that's correct. They just go around now instead of straight. This first-
Mr. Chairman, can we get a clarification on that? Did the Pontons have to agree to that, or could somebody just arbitrarily change their right-of-way?
Again, I don't want to testify, but it's my understanding from reviewing the record and the title that the Pontons have their own and separate easement to their property. Their access is secure.
Yeah. This first slide shows the original approved SUP in red, that's the one we've all been talking about, that was tucked neatly in the back and out of view. The long road leading to it was, as I understand the objection, the expense of preparing that road was part of the problem.
That was one of them.
That was one of the problems there. The new area in green, that was the original plan that we were provided, but I guess that's changed as of 4 o'clock this afternoon, and that's what we were given earlier. We understand, you know, that there's problems with developing this road or providing access for the businesses further west and who's suing who and all of this other good stuff. But frankly, this nonsense really has to end. I've lost track of the number of times that this particular parcel has been before the Board of Commissioners, the Planning Board, the Planning Department, with all these access issues, and there's no telling the amount of county resources that have been expended so far with no resolution to this problem. So what I'd like to do tonight is just ask that maybe we take this opportunity to solve this for once and for all. This is an aerial photo. It's an older photo. It does not show the multi-use path along 12, but it does outline the parcel in question there on the right. It also shows an existing sand road with an improved culvert leading from the parcel back down to Ponton Lane. So one of our suggestions, this is a 25-foot wide road, there's a drainage culvert, it's already been installed, it's north of the platted access, there are no wetlands involved. It would provide access along Ponton Lane for the county, for the Pontons, for-
Objection. This is not relevant, this roadway from our parcel back to the Ponton Lane to this application.
I'd recommend that you overrule the objection, as Ish certainly may testify as to her opinion or belief as to what other access might be appropriate or condition might be appropriate relative to the permit.
You're getting me in hot grease. Overrule.
Okay. All we're, we're saying is, we ask that they're incorporating this additional access. It would, in my opinion, cost very little. It's basically already there. We measured it, it's only 170 feet. It would create a safe, legal access for everyone in the parcel. It doesn't involve wetlands, it's a safe location on the highway, and it solves a multitude of problems that the county is, is facing at very low cost. We also ask a visual buffer to the residential area, but, you know, if that's an issue, I'll go plant, plant the trees, really. We, I just really would like to see this solved. This is a common sense solution, and I ask that you consider our proposal as a condition of acceptance if you are inclined to accept or approve. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Ish?
I need clarification. So you're proposing that the access he's proposing from the highway not be used, correct?
No, I'm proposing that we do use that, but incorporate an additional 170-foot wide strip to the rear of the parcel to attach to Ponton Lane that would provide access for those other businesses in the back there, the county water department, EnviroTech, and A1 Towing.
We're taking.
Does the county have, does the county have access issues to our property?
No, the county has legal access to its property.
Does EnviroTech have legal access to their property?
It's my understanding EnviroTech has legal access from another location to their property.
Okay.
Question. Could the county require this, actually require something like this?
You may make, place conditions upon property that are reason, upon a permit that are reasonably related to the use of that property. I mean, to the extent that you could make findings, you might be able to make that a condition, but again, you would need from the evidence presented to be able to make findings relative to issues that would cause or enable you to make that access way, for example, a requirement or condition of the permit.
Even though it is passed where that parking lot is proposed, has nothing to do with it.
And our roadway that goes into the-
Mr. Chairman, I suggest Mr. Friedman have the opportunity to present his rebuttal evidence in a moment.
Just a minute, yeah.
But you, you're talking about a parcel of property for which application is made, so it's the entire parcel that is subject to this special use permit.
But I guess, my, I guess what I would ask is, if there's an ongoing legal disagreement between the applicant and Mr. Bickford, would we not be putting ourselves in the middle of a lawsuit by providing him an access?
There would certainly be the issue as to whether persons coming from the Friedman property onto the Mid-Atlantic property would be exceeding or increasing the use of that easement or the use for which the easement has originally been provided. I don't know that that necessarily would make the county become a party to a lawsuit. There is, of course, another issue with regard to the Coral Lane, which, under the general law of North Carolina, the adjacent property owner has a right to use that publicly dedicated right-of-way in any event to access his property, that being specifically Mid-Atlantic.
But our application doesn't include that proposal. And the reason why we couldn't use the back road-
Mr. Friedman, please, if you'll wait, I'll give you the opportunity to rebut in just one second. After, is any other questions for Mrs. Ish? No further questions, thank you. Mr. Friedman, you may rebut.
How much is the county proposing to pay for that additional access? That's my question to the county attorney.
I'm, I'm not a witness and I'm not subject to examination, so now is your opportunity to present any evidence that you-
Well, you were, you were helping them present their case.
Now is the opportunity for you to present any evidence you have in rebuttal to the evidence that's been presented so far.
Yeah, I'd like to, the first rebuttal is, is that I'd like to speak to the first gentleman's statement that this was part of some kind of plan, it was not. The parking lot in the back were being blocked by a, what are we going to call it? A cattle dip fiasco, is what we want to call it. And we, we allege that the county has an improper deed in the middle of our property blocking the back parking lot, or we would have proceeded forward with that to solve some of the other problems. If you go back to the original approval, you'll see a roadway that goes through the middle of that property. And on some other notes, this property that we proposed to with this parking lot does not have any wetlands, and to address the very nice lady that lives out there at Village of Ocean Hill, we are a part of the PUD, so it's understandable that this property has passed the sign. And I'm just really surprised that the county attorney would even speak on the fact that some other access that hasn't even been made in our application, in our own land, is a little bit offensive, actually. I finished.
I have a question. What about the nice lady's proposal that the buffering be in accordance with what they require for everything else that's a part of that PUD?
Well, when my dad exempted this property from their guidelines, it was because we wanted to be able to set our own standards. She offered to plant the trees for us, and we'd be glad to discuss that with her.
No, that's, she didn't offer to plant any trees. She offered-
No, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
She said that if this were to go forward, she is just asking that the additional buffering be in such a manner that they don't have to see it, and I'm asking you-
In harmony.
And in harmony, and I'm asking you, do you think that's unreasonable for them to ask for the buffering to be in harmony with the rest of the subdivision?
I'm not aware of the particulars of their existing stuff, so I can't really speak to that, but I can say there are, there is some existing vegetation that's there now, and we plan to put it behind that vegetation, and we plan on planting some more trees, and I would be glad to work with you and see if we can't at least incorporate some of their guidelines into what we want to do. Would that be acceptable?
No. I have a question.
If you put it 25 feet off the road, there'll be no vegetation.
Just a moment, please, we're not going to have a discussion back and forth. This is, again, Mr. Friedman's opportunity to present his rebuttal evidence and for the board to ask questions. Thank you.
We're willing to work with the Village of Ocean Hill board. If we need to move it back five more feet to provide some more vegetation, we're not against that.
That, that was my next question. The other point that was brought up by Mr. Blaylock was the fact that it's 25-foot, well, when you take in the path and the 10-foot, that's only five-foot. And I think there was concern about it being that close to the, the path. The county spent a lot of money on that path and it's really nice, and we want to make sure that it remains nice.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Chip, how far is the, the northern boundary of your parking lot to the closest home in Ocean Hills, further up? Have you, I, I didn't see any, any distances laid out on your, on your map.
Yes, sir, there, there aren't any distances laid out, but it appears to me that it's between 200 and 250 feet, and there's setbacks on lot number 53 and lot number 54. And when you actually go to the, the west, the northwest, where that little inn is with all that arrow and it says Village of Ocean Hill Future Development, we own all that vacant land, so it would only be this, this big block here. I believe your requirements require 10 feet, and we're willing to work with you on the setback to make sure. We just needed to balance some other issues that are on the property that were established before, and we're willing to work with you.
I have one other question, and then I'll be done. On your special use permit application, I mean, I see in the, in the different findings that we have to use, the use will not materially endanger the public health and safety, and a red pen, it will not. I mean, who's, who, I mean, the burden of proof is on the applicant.
Right.
That's, that's your, that's your opinion as to what you believe is. Other people have testified in other ways about things. I mean, where are you deriving your, your, your findings from? I mean, it goes on to will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or budding property. Use will be in harmony with the particular neighborhoods of the area and be located even though the proposed use and surrounded uses are generally permissible in the same district and therefore not, are therefore usually compatible. I mean, all of it, it says it will not or something to that particular thing.
I'd like to answer your question. The first question is that we believe that our plan that goes through TRC will meet the UDO requirements, so that when cars come in there, there's proper distances between things, and there's bumpers, and there's what your UDO requires for a parking lot. That, that's the first item. The second item that you asked me about was adjoining property owners. We're the adjoining property owner from this property, so we don't believe that, you know, it's all vacant land. The third issue was, I'm sorry?
Will it be in harmony with the particular neighborhood or area?
Yes. Corolla has many other buildings with parking lots, and we want this parking lot to look similar to those.
But generally, most, wouldn't you agree that most of those parking lots are in areas to where you have mixed use or, or commercial developments already there?
Yes, but I would say that if you ride up and down the street from Ocean Hill all the way to Dare County, you'll see 99% of the buildings have a little parking lot in front, no landscaping at all, and some of them are sand, some of them are gravel, some of them are paved, and we're not proposing to do any improvements to this that could be construed as contrary to the surroundings. All, all we want to do is just be able to use our property if we can.
I, I certainly am aware of the, the parking issues, I understand that totally. I would much rather see it back in the back, like you originally proposed it, or that you would agree to have sufficient screening to screen from the residential communities on the north side as well as the front side. If, Ben, Mr. Woody, can, is, is that something that can be handled in the?
Yeah, you, under, the, the reason that this is a special use permit is, as a board, you have the ability to, one, make findings, as you see in the application, but, two, you have the ability to, to attach conditions to hold that development to a, to a different or a higher standard. In this case, as a board, if you feel, and I think staff would support this, if it's some additional landscaping to create screening there, possibly some additional setback, because Mr. Friedman said he was agreeable to, to give some relief from the path, I think there's the conditions we can add. I would note that if you add conditions for extra landscaping, I think we need to have some specificity. And what I mean, it's really hard to say, well, hey, do extra landscaping. That means different things to different people, so I think that if we do that, if you want to add that condition, we need to think about, what does that mean? Because what, what Mr. Friedman sees as extra landscaping may be different than what the VOH board sees as extra landscaping.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Woody. Do you have all the information that you need for your staff to make a recommendation by the next commissioners' meeting?
I could do that by the next meeting, yes.
Mr. Friedman, would you be willing to come back? And I, I would feel more comfortable personally with Mr. Woody's staff having a chance to look at your plan. I learned a long time ago, if you get in a hurry, it's going to bite you. And, and I would just prefer, me personally, to allow Mr. Woody and his staff to do due diligence. They're the experts, and I would feel a lot more comfortable if that's okay with you. And I, and I think, you know, it's, I think it would be to your benefit.
And also, maybe we can answer the questions like Ben was saying about, to where we can get on the same sheet of music- get on the same sheet of music with the, with the buffering and that type of stuff, if you would work with him.
Right, because actually, if you bring the aerial photo back up, Mr. Chairman, you'll see that there's already buffering right there on the southern part of the property.
I'm talking about the northern. I see two houses there that looks fairly close.
400 feet.
They're 400 feet away, and I think your ordinance requires 10 feet. And also, you know, um, it, it's kinda hard. I'd like to speak for all of the, um, property owners in these PUDs that own business land, either GB or LBH land, where in order to have a parking lot to earn a buck on land that's assessed for 700 to a million dollars an acre, we come to the special use process. But if somebody builds a house on any one of these lots, they don't have to screen their cars from the street, they don't have to park their cars around the back, there isn't really a big drama over using their property. And we're not proposing to do anything that's not in your UDO. And to answer your question, Mr. Petrie, I'm not adverse to coming back to the next meeting. Mr. Woody, what would you expect we would learn between now and then?
It's a pleasure, the board, I'll answer that. I'd like to look at the existing vegetation, see what it is, what it's composed of. I'd like to see the setbacks of your site, how much vegetation that will remove. I'd like to look at some of the views, not just of the houses to the north, but some of the houses across the street. And I like to discuss what, what would be appropriate plants to possibly add to create increased screening. I'm kinda curious where your access point is in relation to their sign. Is it right beside it? Is it 10 feet north of it? Is it 20? I don't know.
The last time the county made a request, the sign was on our property.
I'm just saying, I did.
You remember that?
I don't, no.
You don't remember requesting of us to move the sign in order, and you were gonna stage on our property? Do you remember?
I remember there was a sign on the right when we asked if we could, uh, have a couple of feet on your property to avoid removing it, and we were turned down, so we didn't remove the sign.
You were approved if you put the apron in, where you were using our property.
Mr. Chairman, would you, could, I make a motion to continue this?
Well, we got to close the public hearing first.
I have a question, Mr. Woody.
Mr. Rohr has a question.
Most of the concern that I'm hearing seems to be about the fact that this is just a parking lot. And I'm wondering if it were actually an application for a professional office building with a parking lot, what the standards would be for the parking lot, and if they would not be appropriate to address just a parking lot. Let's suppose this was a full-blown business plan with the site laid out for various other developments, buildings, whatever, and we just took away all that stuff but the parking lot. And if we held him to that same standard, then we'd be doing what was required by the law, and not anymore, and not any less.
And are you asking me if, if we would hold him to the same standard?
Well, to me, it would, would seem reasonable, because people seem to be objecting to this because it doesn't have anything else addressed or attached to it. If there were a big building behind it, and this was a parking lot for the building, you know, would we have the same issues, the same complaints, or the same standards for it?
You, you may have some, but, but keep in mind, a, a building site, the parking lot for a building site is generally used in a different context than an empty parking lot. Building sites, people come and go during the day for commerce, than the parking lot, you don't, you don't have cars there all night typically. So you have, you have some differences. You, the building site, you have the, the architectural presence of the building. I think it adds something to the site to have a building there. I think if you had a building, a commercial building, I still think you'd want to buffer from adjacent houses.
Oh, I agree. I agree. I think the traffic would be much worse.
I don't know, there's, there's a whole lot of difference when you get down to it, to be honest.
Mr. Etheridge.
Take into account, Ben, uh, we have a parking lot just north of it to the Coastal Estre and Sanctuary. I don't believe there's any buffering off of that parking lot to the street. And I would like to know, do we have a special use permit on that lot? Do we require one there, too?
Your zoning ordinance don't apply to that lot?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Because that's state property.
Only federal is exempt from zoning ordinances. Am I not right, Mr. McCree?
I'd have to look at the statute to see exactly what the exemption is. I know some state facilities are and some are not, but I don't know right offhand without looking at the statute.
I'd like to find that out, sir.
Mr. Friedman?
My father gave the Village of Ocean Hill an oceanfront parking lot that has no building on it, that's just to the west of their clubhouse. Does that have any kind of buffer or screening from any houses? Does it have any kind of special use permit for the property? I'd like to ask that question.
Yes.
It has screening. How much buffer does it have from the road and other houses?
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on. They're, they're not sworn, and it's, we can't do that.
Mr. Chairman, it sounds like to me, Mr. Friedman was asked, would he come back next meeting after addressing the buffering with Mr. Woody and discussing it with the, uh...
Property Owners Association.
Property Owners Association, and reach some kind of reasonable compromise? And I don't see any need to keep, uh...
Bannering.
Bannering back and forth. If we've got a, unless, if we, everybody said yes, why are we still arguing?
I'm gonna close the public hearing and...
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may suggest that you not close...
I mean, excuse me.
That you not, not close the evidentiary phase, in order that you might continue this to your March 7th meeting at, at 7:00 or soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, to continue the matter to conclusion.
Okay. As Mr. McCree just said, do we have a motion?
Throw a move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Item six, appointment to the senior citizens advisory board.
Mr. Chairman, it's, it's got me down as appointing Ms. Martha Burns, which I'm more than happy to reappoint, as long as Mr. Martin reappoints Ms. Jerry Andrews, as she is the one that I did.
Jerry Andrews, yes, I would. She's a former librarian and everyone, yes, she is.
And I will reappoint, um, Rosalie Rose to the senior advisory board.
Okay. We have District Five, Rosalie Rose at large, Martha Burns, and at large, Jerry Anderson. Do we have a motion?
Throw a move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have appointments to the board of adjustments. Let me see if I can find it. We have, it looks like three appointments, Mr. Petrie, Mr. Etheridge, and Mrs. Gilbert. Start with me, you, Mr. Petrie.
I'd like to renominate Earl Weemer.
Can't. He's a second term.
Okay. Um, I want to continue. Come back to me if you don't mind.
Okay. Mr. Etheridge.
I'm not in possession to make an appointment, is that right?
Okay. Mrs. Gilbert.
I'd like to appoint Cameron Tabor to the board of adjustment.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Uh-oh, I left one out, excuse me. Item 7A.
Local legislation.
Consideration of proposed local legislation. Would you like for me to read that, or?
I'd be glad to explain it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
This is a, this is an item that you submitted to the Journal Assembly for consideration during its last regular session. It, it is to allow for the electronic publication of notices of hearing, as opposed to having to expend the monies to, to publish in a, actually a newspaper. At the time that you made the request, a statewide bill had actually been introduced in the Journal Assembly. It was not ultimately passed, but I've heard from some of you commissioners that you would like for the county to again submit for Currituck County, a proposed local act that will allow for the county to publish notices of hearing electronically.
Move for its approval.
Okay. Second. Have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
No.
Okay. Let your vote show, 6-1.
We didn't have any discussion. I was gonna tell you why I was gonna vote no, but I guess we can move on. Go ahead.
Next, we have commissioners' report. We'll start with you, Mr. Martin.
I'd like to say that we had a meeting, uh, last Friday, and it concerned the ongoing look the county's having at building a new animal shelter. And I just wanted to let the public know that this is something that, you know, is ongoing, and we have, uh, a lot of things that we need to do and put in priorities, what we need to do first. And, uh, we've, you know, with a tight dollar that we are involved in now, that we will continue to look ahead to the future, and we will do what is best for all of us at the time. And, uh, I'm sure after our, uh, budget meetings and everything, we'll be able to, perhaps, uh, list exactly where we're going to invest our funds in the county for the best use of them. And that'll be something ongoing, it'll probably take several months.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, sir. Mr. Etheridge.
This took place in Commissioner Gilbert's home in Moayaw, but I attended a breakfast at Moayaw Volunteer Fire Department, put on Sunday before last, and at that breakfast, they did a demonstration on a room not sprinkled versus one that had a sprinkler system in it. And it was shocking to see how quickly involved that room became without the sprinkler system. As soon as it got a little bit of smoke and heat in there, it put it right out like that in one with a sprinkler.
Five minutes.
I know that as the economy rebounds, maybe this is something we should encourage people to do in new residential construction, uh, all over the county, if there's an adequate water supply.
Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. Mr. O'Neill?
Two things.
And you can explain why you voted no.
Well, I want, I want to talk first about the, there's gonna be a joint meeting between the Economic Development Board, the Airport, uh, Board, and the Tourism Advisory Board on March the 10th. And the commissioners are certainly invited to come to that. We are in the process of implementing some of the recommendations that the commissioners made about economic development and how it ties with tourism and the airport and everything. So I think it's important that when we have these three boards together, that the boards of commissioner come together and show support. But I think it's also important that we give direction and, um, uh, show them the things that we think are important for them to be working on and, and keep them going. The next issue I want to bring up is the North Carolina State Budget. As you've seen, our governor has proposed a budget that's gonna push down a lot of additional expense onto the counties. And as I was reading through it, we're, we're talking about if that budget actually goes through every county in North Carolina, the county commissioners are either gonna have to raise taxes, or they're gonna have to cut law enforcement, they're gonna have to cut fire and rescue. I mean, there, there's really gonna be no choice, the amount that is being pushed down upon the counties, if we don't stand up and tell our legislators that that is not acceptable to balance the budget for their spending binges over the last several years, and their good time Charlie rock and roll, now it's come home to roost, not on the backs of the counties. And I've also talked with several of the commissioners and, uh, on the board, and we realize that our, our education in the state's gonna take a hit from the state. But I'm, I'm, I'm pretty certain to say that from talking to everyone, our board of commissioners is not gonna cut our school board budget, and we're gonna fulfill the commitment that we have, uh, always fulfilled. However, we will not be able to fill the state's obligation that they're not gonna fill. So I think it's important that our citizens know that we're gonna continue to fund education and make it a priority as we always have, but we are in no position to take up where the state is not fulfilling its responsibility. So I just wanted to let the public know a little bit about what's going on with the budget as well. Thank you.
I just want to piggyback on what Mr. O'Neill said. Mr. Scanlon, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the letter that we got from Mr. McGee from NACO said that, uh, as the governor's budget was proposed, Currituck County would be looking at about a $330-some-thousand bogey this year. Is that correct?
Well, that was correct to one of the items in the state budget.
Just only one. I'm, I'm just talking about...
The total impact is greater than that, but...
I mean, there were school bus issues that were gonna be coming down to the counties and other things.
The one issue of removing some, um, part of the lottery distribution formula that provides capital funds for school education, that cut alone was $380-some-thousand to Currituck County.
Folks, it's, it's no joke, it's, it's gonna get tough.
One of the other things was the state was going to push down on counties the cost of workers' compensation for state employees.
For both community colleges and the board of education?
Yep. Mr. Rohr?
I'd like to mention a couple of things coming up. As everybody's mentioned, we're working really hard to try to help people the best we can with the economy being like it is. This past week, I met with the Albemarle Commission, I'm a member of that board, and the Northeast Workforce Development Investment Consortium, which has newly reconstituted the North, the Northeast Workforce Development Board, which is really designed to help people get job training, to provide some assistance for companies that will hire people, the number of programs that have been used successfully here in Currituck. Mr. Bishop is, is good contact for those programs. If somebody would like to hire some people to train, or has people that need on, ongoing training, there is financial assistance for that. One of the things that came about, too, is that we got a notification that our cooperative extension now has a satellite office for workforce development board, and that's gonna be, gonna have hours twice monthly from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning. Tomorrow is the first day, and then on March the 16th and the 30th, there's a contact over there. Emily Custer heads up that program, and her number is, of course, 252-480-3500. And if you're interested in going over there and going through that program, the libraries have hosted this in the past, but now you're gonna have an opportunity, the cooperative extension, to work with a representative of the Northwest Workforce Development Board. One other group I'd like to give kudos to today, had a meeting this past week, is a local charity group called Currituck Kids, which was started by a young lady, April Bennett, over on Bell's Island. It's grown great guns, it's doing very well. They're helping a lot of kids who fall through the cracks between social services and other things that would help them gain the things that these kids need to maintain their self-esteem, to perform well in school. And we've got some supporters right out in the audience. I'd like to thank Karen and Ed Ish, because they're supporters and sponsors of kids with Currituck Kids. And all of you who are interested can certainly join, they've got a great website, currituckkids.com. Go check it out, see what it's all about, and if you can, help out as much as you can. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rohr. Mr. Petrie?
I'd like to piggyback on to, uh, Mr. O'Neill and Commissioner Idlet said about Currituck schools. I think Mr. Scanlon told me a while ago, Currituck County ranks 16th, uh, was it, was it 16th out of how many counties?
Out of 100, what's that, out of 115 systems.
115 school systems. Currituck County ranks 16th as far as money that we, we put into the school system. So Currituck County is doing a great job. The second thing is Wednesday night, I think, the board of commissioners and the board of education have a joint meeting. Is, is...
Thursday.
Thursday night, okay. The board of commissioners and board of education is having a joint meeting, and obviously the topic is gonna be budget. So, um, just want to reassure the people of Currituck County that, that, you know, we're, we're going to address the problem and do the best we can.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. Mrs. Gilbert?
Um, yes, I'd like to, um, just remind everybody that there is a work session on Saturday beginning at 11 o'clock at the airport. I encourage anybody that would like to come and sit in on our work session at the airport advisory board to be there at 11 o'clock. I'd also like to announce that at the Currituck House, our assisted living in Moayaw, on 141 Moayaw Landing Drive, will have their first annual hogwash festival this Sunday, beginning at 4 o'clock. And the hogwash will start at 4 o'clock. The administrator, the managers, and anyone who would wish to jump in on the fun is invited to join. The sponsors for this will be Southland and also Town Bank, and the proceeds for this will go to the cure of Alzheimer's. So I encourage anyone that can be there to be at the Currituck House, 4 o'clock to 7 o'clock on Sunday, um, March 1st.
Thank you. Do you have to bring your own hog, or will they be provided?
Um, I'm hoping that the hogs will be provided, um, you know.
Bunch clean.
It's good, clean fun, so, um, just, all you need to do is show up. Like I said, barbecue is being, um, served by, um...